Productive work session and it was decided then that we would meet quarterly. And this is the first of those such meetings we decided to meet. And of course, this is obviously beginning with one. You know, this is an opportunity for the council to hear, you know, from y'all. I mean, as far as specific needs, Board of Education. Certainly, we should keep open lines of communication, you know, as between us. You know, we've talked before about official communications coming from superintendent to the city manager with respect to specific financial requests. We do recognize that we are all in this together. I mean, we are educating our youth, it's very much important. It also greatly impacts our prospects and economic development. So I'm glad we're all here together. So at this time, I think I'll just, it's okay, I'll go and turn it over to Dr. Hill. You know, as we're talking about, you know, specifics here.
I think that Mr. Folks and I were given, I guess, a directive or task to work together to try and come up with something in terms of how the city council could work to help Aniston City Schools. So pretty much we talked, we tried to lay out, I guess, based on what we were hearing from both of our groups, what we want to do. We came to some smaller group to present. And I really want Mr. Folks to kind of just push that out there as far as starting for next year, if I remember correctly. We talked about the possibility of, correct, wrong now, I want to make sure we're on the same page. Five hundred thousand possibly being built. If we look at it with the city council to build in the budget, if possible. So I'll let you go.
Well, we had this conversation when I met the board and I talked with the other certain members of the council. And we certainly look at, we can't make a commitment to what we're going to do next year. But we are looking at, talking to our finance and working through our finance and our father. What can we do? Let us know what you need and you're forward. And we will make a recommendation to the council and looking at a number that we all need, but we want to have this number. But again, this number cannot be made by me, it has to be made by the majority of the council. But we've had that conversation. What can we do more, letting the story come, understand how you impacted statewide, understand that, and understand instructors, such as instructors that we put in place. Those structures that can't stay in place unless you have a sustainability, some type of sustainability. So we did have this conversation, so we're looking, addressing pre-K and other things that you're not budgeted for, things that happen with your transportation that we know going on. Those are the things that we can, those are the things I was going to buy the council on and make it up, make it, so they can make an informed decision on what it needs. I just wanted, moving forward, whatever we can do more to help the school out, because the council, the councils willing to do that. And that's all we're willing to see, which is where we're going. And that's the.
I think that's pretty much the gist of it in terms of where Mr. Folks and I have come to understanding. The rest of it, I think, is where does the city council and Board of Education stand with what has been presented.
No, it's just these conversations. We're talking about moving forward, next year's budget, praying for the council, how we can have them know, let us know what they need. Like I said, again, instructors, whatever they may need, letting you all know and then we can come back and deal with talkable finance. How can we help out more? But again, it's y'all's decision. But that's what we're talking, moving forward to do more for the schools that we have to do.
So what are some of those things that have been talked about?
So what I did was I was, you know, we, our conversation went straightforward. I told Mr. Folks, I said, the best way to help Aniston City Schools is to set a specific amount each year that would come to Aniston City School Board. And then any, anything that we need from that standpoint, we would be able to utilize those funds to purchase. Do we have certain staff positions that we would love to be able to fund? Yes, we do. Do we have some facility things and you all to? So let me go back, let me clear the record. There's been no decisions about consolidation. That was only a discussion to start to think about it and what could the possibilities be of it? Because that seems to have an effect on how people think about what we would do in the future. And that's not the case. But our main goal, getting back to this was, or my main goal, apologies, speaking to what was given was, I set them out because now we could take that amount and say, okay, we know we need to have this this year. So we would be able to fund that. If it was a position to do whatever in a specific school, such as elementary schools, we'd be able to say, okay, we know we can get this specific amount every year. So therefore, we know that we can provide and go ahead and do that. If it's to purchase something for the needs of the students or the teachers, like I said, if it's transportation, whatever, we would be able to just go ahead and do it without having to go back and forth, right? Hey, can you build in or can you do? We would just know that we have this specific amount coming every year.
I mean, just so we can have an idea, I mean, what are some specific things for you to get a specific amount? You know, obviously, I don't know what a specific amount might be. But what are some things that you would like to help us, help y'all specifically?
So I'll give an example. I met today with several people. We talked about some of the things we know a couple of the facilities need, that we have, we know we need to do. Whether they're outdated or whether they need to be upgraded to ensure safety of students, to ensure better quality. We got into, you know, a few million dollars range, right there. Basically, you know, we talked about athletics, and I speak about athletics, but just off the top, that was one of the items that we discussed. So you're talking about a brand new gym. You can't just leave the old gym, you got to refurbish it because if we make some moves later on down the line. So you start talking about average cost, could be anywhere between two to four million, I'm sorry, depending on what you do. So between refurbishing and then building a new gym, building a weight room for a weight room that's compatible for male and female students alike to ensure that everything is adequate. So I'm just giving you an example of that. If you talk around the lines, and I'm just speaking across the board here, having an instructional coach for every school. So we have five schools. An instructional coach at every school would cost you an average of seventy to eighty-five thousand dollars, depending on their experience, when you include staff, I mean, when you include pay and benefits. So things like that. But now you get into the sustainable side. Because we can't hire somebody and then the next year we say, sorry, we don't have the funding. So because of the way the budget worked out, so you got to go. Because now we get into a level of how the law equates. We are a right to work, state of our own, correct, for Alabama. But at the same time, employees have rights. So if we hire somebody that we know is for the children, and I can't come back if they've been working for us for, in four years, and say, hey, by the way, we can't use you now, so you got to go. Yeah, we got to process, but now it creates an issue that we can't stand. So that's just a couple of examples of what to talk about. Different programs that we would like to see placed into the schools. You don't just want to say, like, I can just preach and say, we have robotics. We have robotics clubs, but we don't have a true robotics class because that requires somebody with the back mind of engineering or robotics STEM. So now, do you put it at one school, do you put it at several schools? You really needed that several schools. We have an alternative school setting that needs to be revamped. It's more than it has been in the past years, but it's not funded at all by the state. So any funding that we get, we go through federal funding, try to take care of a couple of those positions. And then we go from there and we say, okay, well, we want to offer for this specific set of schools. Because alternative schools are just not for kids who have been behavior disruptions. Alternative schools are for those kids who may not like traditional setting and want to accelerate, or maybe for those kids who want sometimes to do a roller setup, where they come in, they don't have to look at a teacher, but they do their work on a computer. And then they leave that after the day and complete their practical work. So there are some specific things that are required. And again, we go back to sustainability, being able to pay those specific salaries. And then making sure that we're paying at the level in order to get people to come to us. Because that has been an issue since my time here. When you, when you want to pay people, you know, you got to bargain down and hope that they go for it. And then when you get them in and they realize, hey, I can make more money over here, so I'm going to leave. Just off the top of my head. Members?
You know, I definitely agree with being able to provide more funding where we absolutely can. There still is an accountability piece and transparency piece that I am trying to build my ground on. And that's for both the council and for both of the school board. You know, there has to be a level of transparency of how funds are utilized within the school system and how our students are reaping the benefits of those. While I do agree that there are some things that need to be done in the athletic world, I do not feel that it is a priority as of right now, considering the facility needs that, you know, obviously need to have in account with the consolidation conversation that I think, you know, needs to be a serious conversation between both parts, considering it could potentially affect the city as a whole. So, I mean, in discussing giving more funding, I don't have an issue with that. As far as just giving the funds without a transparency piece or accountability piece?
Might I suggest that I heard kind of a bunch of, I thought they were speculating, Dr. Hill, talking around, hey, we like this program, we'd like to have this, we'd like to have that. Can we put it down on paper, hey, you know, our five-year capital plan has a finite item of capital improvements that we need to make? Or, hey, we need a new gym? Okay, well, in order to get a new gym, we're probably going to have to get a bond issued because that kind of dollar is, two to four million is not going to build a new gym first. I live in that world, and there's no way today that you're going to get there for that number. So it's going to require a bond, all right? Hey, we're going to build it. The school system says, hey, we're going to build a new gym. And the city council says, okay, that's good. Or dual weight rooms or something like that? Okay, we agree with that. We agree that that's a valid need and we support that. We'll help fund X number of dollars towards the bond repayment each year so that you have a set finite number coming from us that we know and we can tell our constituents where that money's being expended in the school system. And you have the comfort of knowing that it is going to be there each year to help you make that bond payment. Or if it's an additional instructor in each school, or a reading coach, or whatever it is that is needed by the school system, we need one in each school, all right? This is what our dollars are. This is what it's cost us annually to put one in each of the schools, or two in each of the schools, or whatever it takes, right? Then we got a finite number and we say, hey, we'll budget this every year into the system for this individual purpose. And it's got to be spent that way. You got to be able to document this being spent that way because we got to tell the people that elect us that that's the way it's being spent. But if there's a finite thing like that that is recurring, it's an annual occurrence, right? I mean, we don't need to replace a roof every year, but we have roof leaks every year, right? So does the city. We have, we budget capital monies towards that kind of stuff every year, right? So you can look at your past years and your average and see what you're spending in those kinds of environments. Hey, we can look at our HVAC system when we know we're getting into life on this. We know we're getting into life on this roof. We know we're getting into life on, you know, we got to upgrade technology, you know? Cat five is not good enough anymore. We need cat six, or we need wireless environment in all of those schools that our schools and our kids need. If we can sit down and find finite plan for those things, then I, I can't speak for the whole council, but I can get behind something like that where I know that when somebody comes up to me on the streets and says, why did you give money to the school system? I can say, I gave it to them because they needed this. Wouldn't you like your kid to have this? And then they go, oh, yeah, that makes good sense. But then I can, I'm in a defensive position and you're in a position of safety and knowing that the funding is going to be there for you to accomplish the task you need to accomplish. It's just a matter of us matching up a task, a specific need that the school system has with dollars that the council has so that we both can speak in a positive way towards the growth of the school system and the city both, because those both grow off of that. And that's kind of my thought process.
Yeah, absolutely. And hypothetically, if it were something like the copper K Academy, like you all discussed, where there's, you know, an acute need there. I mean, if there is a specific amount dedicated toward a specific line item or project, I mean, that frees up funds that y'all have for whatever projects, you know, you would like to spend that money on. But it does, I think it does help us as a body. And Jay put this very well, to have something specific that we know that we're dedicated these funds to on a yearly basis. Because again, I mean, that just frees up other funds that you have anyway.
You know, I think it.
Sure, yeah. And this should be like a freewheeling, you know, obviously.
I'm not somebody that talks. But I'm going to talk. I grew up in Aniston, most of you all know that. And I'm probably one of the most passionate people in this room for the city of Aniston. I had to leave here to find out how great it is. I'm probably one of the people in this room that has the most love for the kids of Aniston. I've spent time with them, have worked with Amelia with them. She knows how great they are. I know how great they are. But I want you all to know that I, as a citizen of this city and as a member of the Board of Education, respect you all as council members. And I expect you to know what your students need. I know that you know that the West Side is its food, that's right. I know you know there's how, that the coalition, I mean, the housing is, they have a big housing like that. You all know that, I don't have to tell you. And I respect you all for what you know and what you do. I would like that same respect from me. For all the knowledge that is in this school, in this, on this city council, that we know what our children need. We know, we absolutely know what they need. And we should get the same respect from you that I expect to give you, Jay, and do. So I don't quite understand why we have to tell you every single penny that we want to spend for these kids. If you look at what they accomplished with what they have, it is amazing. Absolutely amazing. And they do, we have everything in the city with these kids. We have athletics, you all know that. We have poets, we have writers, we have musicians, we have artists. We've got it all. And we have to be able to take care of every one of their needs. If you go to any other system around here, any facilities that they have, I'm not talking about just athletics, I'm talking about lots of things. I was in the homeboy last week and went to an elementary school with my granddaughter for grandchild's day. They have something as simple as an eagle's nest that they bought built for these kids where they can go and can read. They talk about eagles and what eagles do. It is amazing what our kids do without all of that stuff. And I just would really love to see us work together with a lot of compassion that I know we've got for the kids that I know we've got. And the fat lady that's over, but she's not going to be.
You didn't, you didn't say something?
Well, no, I wasn't, but I can't.
I just didn't want to interrupt you.
Uh-uh, go on, Mr. Roberts.
So I think one of the big misconceptions is that I've seen since I've been on the council is that the council wants to micromanage the school board. That is not the case. The council wants to do what's right and we get beat up in certain areas about certain things. Now, it's accountability and transparency. I swear, Aniston, the whole city, everything involved that has the Aniston name on it, seems like it's allergic to transparency and accountability.
Yes. But the fat lady is going to say something else here. Our website has our posted budget on it every single month. It might not be there the first day, but it's there. And every penny that we spend is accounted for. Every penny that we spend.
Well, let's let Mr. Roberts finish here. So let's all be respectful of each other.
So it's my thing, and I'll just say, I don't think we're trying to micromanage, but when things that, when we come, when we show up at meetings and we grandstand or we try to make it seem as if we're not trying to work with each other. We agreed at our first meeting that we would have quarterly meetings. We also agreed that there will be quarterly reports. Once we get it or not, it's even here on there. My question is this, and I understand there are a lot of things that the school needs. We got, I'm about as passionate as anybody about Aniston. But my question is, okay, we need this supplemental income. Have we ever thought about forming a educational foundation that can go out and have it raise money to help for some of these things? There are some places that have educational foundations that help fund the extracurriculars or whatever, the stipends, or whatever it may be that could supplement. And I say that because right now, right, when we, when there was a fight over in Birmingham between the basketball teams, our alumni came up with whatever the fine was in less than seventy-two hours. We came up with that money. By me, hey, look, the school, then the call was, initial call was, the school should not have to pay for this money, for this. We didn't start the fight, we were protecting our children. Money was raised, anywhere from, I can't remember exactly what the fine was, somewhere close to four thousand dollars or forty-eight dollars. I'm an alumni of Aniston and I know there are several business owners in our city who would not mind donating to a foundation if they felt the foundation would be transparent and honest about what money was being used for. Now, we talked about this at the last meeting. Everybody came into a storm. However, just like people feel there's no civility, when I got in the office, they felt there was no civility amongst the council. They feel like, however they feel toward the school board, because people will say, now, I'm going to give you what the street's going to tell you. We give money, we don't know where it's going to. And I get that. But I also understand those people don't come to these type of meetings to understand or look at a budget. So I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think anybody has a problem giving the money. And we don't, we don't, if y'all, if it's a list of two hundred things on wish lists that the school board had out there and we could fund it, I'm quite sure this council would. However, what is being done outside of the council? Are there any funds coming to the school board or coming to our school system that doesn't flow through the city council?
Yes.
Let me just, I meant no disrespect in my comment. I have the utmost respect for our elected school system as school board as well. But what we're talking about as we sit around this table is not about the federal monies or the state monies, or even the ad lorm taxes or any of that that goes through the system. We don't, that is your collective job to manage those funds for the betterment of our student body. That's what you're elected to do and that's what we expect you to do. And that's what the entire city expects, beyond what is the norm, which from what I'm hearing, nobody's against. We just got to be able to defend it. You got to understand that we've got to be able to defend it and be able to say, this is where it went. This is where it went. I don't need to know how every dollar is spent. If you tell me, hey, Jay, we need a half a million dollars every year for capital improvements. And we'll give you a list of those capital improvement projects that we're going to try to accomplish in this calendar year based off of the budget numbers that you give us. Then if X runs over and we don't spend it on Y because X ran over, because that happens in our world, then, okay, but at least we have a list. And we say, well, yeah, they asked for another half a million. They put a new roof on Cobb, they upgraded the playground at Gold Springs, they refinished the gym at the high school. You know, those, we can say, yeah, that's where that money went. That's where it went. Okay, then nobody's arguing it anymore. And we're not trying to argue it either, I don't think. It's, we're trying to figure out how to give it to you. But we got to be able to, there's got to be an accountability. And I threw out a number. Now, I don't know if that number's available or not in our budgeting process. I don't know what we've got. I mean, the school system's job is the schools. The city council's job is the streets and brush pickup and police and fire and.
Economic development.
Economic development. And all of these varying pieces and parts, we've got to spread that money that we receive in a different way than you have to spread your money. So when we start taking money from, somebody's complaining because, you know, I mean, let's take West 14. How many times do we hear about West 14 getting paid, right? When we start taking money and we say, well, we're going to give it to the school system because the school system needs it, which we're not denying it does, right? How do you explain that to the people that live on West 14 Street or that drive West 14 Street every year that say, because you can't get it? So we got to figure out how to manage all of those pieces and parts in a way that yields a success to the whole. And a part of that is the school system. And we all acknowledge that. You know, the past has not always been a cohesive arrangement between the school board and the city council. I'd like to think that there is at this point and that we are working in a way. I mean, we already have in our second meeting with this group, I don't think I had, this is my fourth term, I don't think I've had two meetings with the school board in my previous three terms in any calendar year. So I'm thrilled to see us sitting around the table and having a discussion. I think we're all here, you know, I heard you talk about passion, I heard Dee Dee talk about passion. I'd like to believe everybody sitting around this table's got passion for both the city of Aniston as a whole and the school system. If we don't, we need to get up from the table, all right? We're in the wrong place and the people that elected us should run us out of office because that's where it belongs, okay? So if you don't, if you're not passionate about Aniston and Aniston City Schools, then you shouldn't be in this room. And quite frankly, I wish the room was bigger and there were a hell of a lot more people in here. Because we don't have that kind of spirit. But that's the job of this group right here, is to rally that kind of spirit in our constituents and to get them engaged in our system and to do the things like Dee Dee said, you know? I mean, the hospital has a foundation, like, you know, they raise money and they do a good job of it. They're a good, they do a good job of it. But when they're ready to spend that money, they come to the board and they say, we would like to buy ten new ICU beds, which is what they did last year, which the hospital desperately needed but was short on capital to do it. But there was a, there was a foundation in place that went out and did the necessary things to raise the dollars, to be able to bring them back and grow the system and make it better. We need to be doing some of the same things here. And I know we've got, we've got Aniston Education Foundation. We've got, we've got a couple of them already, I guess. Maybe we figure out a way to combine them. Public Education Foundation is the other one, right? We've got both of those out there. Maybe we need to figure out a way to get them working hand in glove together so that we can grow this and yield something positive. I don't know what that answer is. And quite frankly, that's not, that's not the council's place to do it. That's the school board's place to do it. And I'm not interested in stepping on anybody's toes in the process. But I am interested in helping you get there if you need it and want it.
Could I say something? What I, what I have been hearing is the priority really is the pre-K program because there's no state funding for it. Is that still the case, that the pre-K would take precedence?
May I?
Yes, yes, sir.
It's a grant for pre-K. So when everybody keeps saying, let's do for Cobb and pre-K, the reason Cobb is open because of some things that have put kindergarten there. Because yes, they, we get a grant that provides for four teachers, right? Five, and maybe a few aides. Okay, so, but that's based on your numbers as well. Okay, so, but that's based on your numbers as well. So when we write that grant, they don't let us come back and say, well, you know, you expect to have two hundred pre-K students. If we don't beat two hundred pre-K students, we lose that funding. It doesn't come back to us, okay? If we go over that number, then we gotta go back and say, hey, we need, and they'll probably tell us, no, this is all you get because this is where the grant qualified you. Part of the issue is that we're able to fund the things that need to happen for pre-K. Now, there are some things that they don't fund. And that's where kindergarten comes into that, because we can kind of marry the two. If we do training for the kindergarten teachers, we just train the pre-K teachers. If we buy some electronic equipment, it may be on the kindergarten hall, pre-K has to come over there because we're monitoring about that. The only time they let us do something different was pandemic, and we said we wanted to buy computers and all of a sudden, it was our responsibility to go buy computers for pre-K students. But nobody else's responsibility to do it. I'm gonna say something else. I'm, I'm just a superintendent at the end of the day. I work for the Board of Education. But I want to answer some of the questions, because I don't think some of it is fair. I, I, I think what's happening here is, is egos. Now, Mr. Fox, if I'm wrong, you please help me now, because you and I have some conversations. We're so afraid, and I'm being straightforward now, because we don't want to say the wrong thing and step on toes or make this person angry because we said something out of order. The goal of both of these entities sitting in here is the community of Anniston City. And I've had a conversation with people. I hear people say, I get beat up. I don't think, is anybody in this room has gotten beat up more than me except one other person or supervisor superintendent? I'm just gonna be straightforward. I got beat up today three times and I didn't even see it coming. Yes, you get complaints, but you get complaints because people have become complacent with, I'm over here and I'm gonna go to the person I think will help me because they were totally coming to me. Now, the ones who have come to me, I'll heal if I could. If I could, and I was straightforward, transparent and honest, I can't do that for you. Then there's been the personal side, the political side. Oh, we're gonna do this because if you don't, I'm gonna take this from you, I'm not gonna do this for you. Let's keep it, let's keep it one hundred percent honest in here. We're sitting here now and it's still egos across the room. So to answer the question, educational foundation. We had to use the funding, that was an educational foundation that was created, just to pay off a bill to keep the lights on. So my job as superintendent is, the board has said it, he said to me, Dr. Hill, do we have an educational foundation? No, we don't. Chief Finance Officer, can we get an educational foundation? Yes, sir, as soon as you want to get started, but you need to make some time in your schedule and try to get some of the accomplishments to do agency D and E. So when I started talking to the council, that's what they said. We don't trust. So you're absolutely right, you don't. What's gonna happen to the funding? So let me lay something out. Well, I want you to serve on it so that you know the funding is going where it has to go. That makes it even easier. Well, no, I don't want to do that. So I, 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 I want everybody to understand that this is, this is, this is simple. And the last thing I'm gonna say is, when I'm dealing with our staff, because the same things that, that this council said, you're right, we have different entities. I have some of the same situations that when I come to the board, I have to ask them to make a decision. How do we deal with this over here because this school deserves this? How do we take care of this over here because this community said, we're not treating this school right or these people right over here? It's just like consolidation. If I come and say, we're closing a specific school and everybody remembers what ten street happened. Everybody had the rationale and the reason why we shouldn't close ten street. I had mine. I still got beat up because people said, that's our community school. That's not fair. That's not right. But I had to consider all of the, the, the pieces that go into it. So I, I, I say this to you. When we talk about being fair, I have to explain to all the employees, when I deal with a teacher, whether it's a disciplinary issue or whether it's something they should have done teaching the children, I can't treat this one this way and turn around in the next room and treat this separately when they both did the same thing. So when we talk transparency, when we talk accountability, those are the two biggest words that I preach walking through the door. And I preach it every day. I have not stopped preaching it. When my staff comes to me and they ask me a question, the first thing I say is, is it fair to the children? And is it fair to the staff? If those two don't work, then we're not, we're not gonna fool you. So I, I, I'm standing here now, is accountability, because I believe what you're saying. You gotta have accountability. You gotta have transparency. We want the public to be able to understand. We understand the same thing you do. We have a meeting, I think you all have more people than we have at the meetings. I beg people to come to the meetings. Come see what the board is talking about. Come see what I'm talking about. Come talk to me, tell me what your issues are. But at the end of the day, is transparency and accountability across the board for everything that this council does? That is the question that you gotta ask yourself. The same thing that you will hold the school board to, are you holding everyone to that same accountability and transparency? Are the rules the same? And at any point, anybody can come talk to me, because the first thing I do is I tell you, go see her. If you wanna know what's happening, you go see her. I've had people even call me, Dr. Hill, what are you doing with this money? I break it down. If I can't, I go find the person that can break it down for me and tell them, even when I don't want them to know. Hey, here's where we are. So I'll even put something else out there. We know how much we have in reserve, but we don't even have, we don't even have that money that's gonna recur, recur. But we gotta spend that money to help do some things to children. So we're gonna take a risk and say, well, we're gonna go for it and do what happens if the board approves it. But all I'm asking is, let, let's be straightforward, everybody. Let's be honest.
Let me take it back, I've been quiet.
I apologize if I stepped out of, out of my place.
Yeah, I said, we're here to talk.
This is just for, I'm not gonna leave the superintendent out on the island as well, because the conversation that superintendent I had is just what he said. We're just looking at, we, we gotta understand, we work for a body. We understand that, that we come to this table. We always talk about transparency and now, when we talk about money, anytime we meet together, his finance department's there and so is my financial team when we talk about this thing to ensure that whatever the council is asking me to do, then I'm doing the same thing. So I'm not gonna leave him out. That's all we talk about. We don't come up with numbers, we don't come, we're trying to do, what can we do for our bodies that we actually work for, because we understand, we work for a body. What can we do best to all, to, to bring this together so we can do what's best for the kids? And that's what, all we talk about, that's what we got. So I just want, I'm not gonna leave you on that aisle.
Dr. Hill. Doctor, I've been trying to get in for you. About thirty minutes, but I'm coming in now. Sorry. A lot of good, I'm having a hard time sitting here, I had a hard time coming to the meeting. Because when you come to a meeting, people say a lot of things, but I don't necessarily look, listen to everything people say. I watch body language. That tells me more than any words that anybody can say. I promise you, the body language tells, tells me everything. Uh, Dr. Hill mentioned accountability, uh, transparency, and everybody's been in the same boat. Fact of the matter is, guys, the elephant in the room today, right now, we're talking about foundations. We're talking about spending funding. What we haven't talked about, and we talked, I talked about it last time, and I'll be, be transparent that time, I was attacked. My, don't, don't want anybody to wonder, my perception is that I was attacked. My perception, not your perception. So, when we walked in that room that day, I had given to our board members three things that we were gonna join together to talk about. Those three things that I had given to the board members, Mayor Baker, this is all three of those things, uh, at the beginning of the meeting. It is no way possible for him to say, it's that same three things that I had given to the board members. Transparency, being honest, building a foundation of trust. You go back, get, get in, go in that meeting where we started talking about the one percent sale tax. Then people start asking about vision statement, mission statement. We've done money here, we've done money there. Those are deflectors. Fact of the matter is, we never got to the point. The public is not going to give us any more money from a rate of taxes. That ain't gonna happen. And you guys know it's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen. Fact of the matter is, in two thousand twelve, January thirty-first, two thousand twelve, a resolution and an ordinance passed, so one percent sale tax, period.
Look, Mr. Hughes, if, if I can stop you there, we, we've talked about this.
No, 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 no.
If you're talking about litigation again, I mean, that, that, that's just what you need to do.
Then, then we'll, we'll have to do that.
Well, then, we don't need to talk about it.
We, we're not, we're not, we're not. We discussed this.
No, 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 no. I, I want this to be known to everybody, what you guys keep saying in running from.
Mr. Hughes, wait a minute, we're not running.
No, 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 let, let, let me.
You, you're the one who has publicly said many times, threaten litigation against this body, even in a public. If, if that is the course of action you intend to take, we don't need to discuss that in this meeting. That, that is not even productive in any way.
Fact of the matter is.
And it also means that if he's disgusted, then you're winning right now. If you get in a court of law, if it gets there. So why, why, why?
If I'm talking about, if I'm talking about, if we're in a court of law.
Then you're winning.
No one's trying to win anything. I'm just saying, if, if, if this is a legal issue, you intend to present it to a court. Present it to a court. This is not a court.
This is what I'm saying. The, the public has a court.
Yeah, nothing like that. And you know it's.
This is what I'm saying. I went back and did a complete analysis with our school finance officers. And we looked at every, over the last twelve years. He shows where every penny had been spent. Fact of the matter is, guys, over the last twelve years from the, uh, sales tax, fifty-three million dollars has come in. From the one percent sale tax. Of that fifty-three million dollars, forty-three million dollars have been gone to the Fire, Fire and Police Fund. And we've got, we've got five percent. But that ordinance saves, that, no, no, that ordinance saves. Education, police and fire, fires and business development. It didn't give a percentage. I got it. It did not give a percentage. But you talking about fair? Transparency, being just. How can you tell us that you can give forty-three billion dollars over the last twelve years to the Fire, Fire and Police Fund and give us two point eight billion dollars? And then when you have to ask for that, you have to beg for it? That doesn't make any sense.
That was also a decision of pre-discense. Again, I, I thought the purpose of this meeting was we move forward talking about how we can work together. Again, but, 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 but again, y'all, y'all, if, look, if, if this is going to be a legal issue, make it a legal issue. Hey, we're not getting any, we're talking about.
This, this, this is what our plan has to be now. Since we still on a lead person making. And lead person making is, is, is from the Justice Department. And what they do is, they look at every bit of funding, they look at pipeline from school to prison. If I look at sort of things that we talked about in our city, our children, the black kids, you go down to that courthouse, during any month, a lot of our kids, they go to our school, our city up there in that courthouse. So, and then we've got this lawyer that we're talking to that, when he comes, and it, 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 it doesn't deal with the funding side of it, it'll, he gonna deal with the discrimination and the bias side of it. That's the issue that to go on, because you look at how this thing is going, this is bigger. So, so what, 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 what I'm going to do here, no, again, read body language. So when you read, when I say, what you, what you.
Let me tell you something. You have thought us a liar, you have said we are discriminatory, you have threatened us with litigation. You have done that numerous amount of times. You have been disrespectful beyond compare, beyond compare.
Give it numerous times.
You have sat on a school board and allowed a mismanagement of funds for years.
What?
And you sit here and you sit here and continue to be disrespectful. Who is hurting the kids?
Who?
We're sitting here talking.
Y'all, y'all, we're not getting any.
We're talking, we're talking about passion, we're talking, we're talking about respect for one another, we're talking about all these things.
It is appalling.
And we're still not helping the kids. At the end of the day, we are telling you guys, we have not denied funding, we're gonna continue to give you this funding. This is proof of how much funding we have given you guys over the years. This is proof.
We.
So at the end of the day, what are we arguing about here? Are we saying the argument here? Because we're not denying you anything.
You, you're talking about a ten-year-old resolution, quite frankly, that, that, only two members on this body were even serving. And, and I think they can articulate the reason why they did what they did and, and it was a good reason. Again, y'all, we're going backwards. That, I, I, I thought the purpose of this meeting was to go forward. We're, we're not going forwards at all. I mean, the only way to ultimately solve this issue that you're talking about, I guess, because I, when the four of us talk, I, I thought that we had resolved it then. Apparently, we, we have not. So if, if you're going to file a lawsuit over that, file it.
Got it.
And we will defend it.
Got it.
Okay, because I think you're wrong.
Got it.
But going forward, going forward, we, we want to work with this body.
We, we want to work too, but we, we can't sit back there, Jack. We can sit here and say we care about the kids. How can we say that?
And I, I, I don't even know what the purpose of this meeting.
So, Mr. Mayor, before I ask you a few more things, so, so, Mr. Hughes, and you're, so what? So what, no, so what, so what the crux of what you're trying to say is? And I, and I, and I was always wondering why when people come up and say, they talk to the board members and say, we owe the school money. Is this, is this what they're talking about? About we owe the school board money?
They probably think about that one percent sale tax.
So, again, so you plan, so your plan is to bring in the lawyer and pretty much sue the city for what, whatever you think is fair of that money that was given?
What, this is the deal. I thought we were sitting down talking, the right way to do is to talk down, sit down and talk to the superintendent, the city manager, the mayor, and talk about this. This is the last place that we need to be talking about this, but no, but nobody. I brought up, you, 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 you understand your body language when you sit there?
Do you understand your body language?
Yeah, I got it.
We're being reported, we're being reported.
Y'all are not getting anything accomplished. I just walked in.
Hold on, man, Jay, Jay. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Look, what, what we gonna need to do?
This is a, wait, 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 wait.
We're gonna need to adjourn the meeting. If this is how it's gonna go.
No, 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 I, I, I mean, because I, I, I really want to sit here and listen. I want to sit here and listen because, Mr., if y'all don't mind, this is a business meeting. Please, Mr. President, please, please. So, Mr. Houston, you started your conversation about you didn't want to come to the meeting because you felt you were jumped on the last time we had a meeting. And I, and I distinctly remember that meeting because each and every one of the council members felt you said something that was not, and we talk about egos, it seems as if right now, that we're holding on, because I didn't go, I, I remember that last meeting, I won't go back to that because they made me mad, or I'm gonna make somebody. Okay, if, if that's what we want to do, that's fine. But I'm, I'm thinking, everybody here, and, and I think it was said by one of the school board members, if, or Jay said, if, if we're not here for the growth and the betterment of our relationship together, then we do need to adjourn the meeting. Now, I can't do nothing about what happened ten years ago. Now, I was, I was perplexed by the once, the, 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 the new business sales tax that we were keeping and it seems as if nobody in the school will, I'm just asking me on outside looking in, I can be dead wrong if I am, I am. But I think we ended up with eighty thousand dollars in there and we had to retro it because it had expired after three years. But in those three years, in that period of time, you know, and, and I, I, I think what it is, the side, the school come at foot, we get to them. But from what I'm hearing from you all is, if we, if we say we're gonna put two dollars back, as soon as we get those two dollars back, we get, you know, we go to two dollars. It'll go to you three dollars. And we're having them, the kid is not being built. Now, if we're not gonna talk about going forward, now, if you have litigation, that's fine. But we can't sit here and, and keep going back ten years. We talked about something happened ten years ago. Ten years ago, I didn't re, I didn't, I cared about the system, I thought we were doing a good job. But as I said before, people think everybody on the city council should be in jail and people think everybody on the school board should be in jail because they're not being informed. Now, if we can't as leaders come with our inside voices and talk about what we need going forward, then is this meeting really of substance, of any substance? I, I, I mean, and I understand, everybody has their own ego, their pride and this and that. But we can't just be hollering across the room. We can't be.
I get it.
You know, but you did, oh, I, I, you know, Sierra mentioned that you called us liars, thieves, racist, all that. You, and this was after we voted to give money. And, and I may mention, I don't think after that meeting, if the public. And, and I may mention, I don't think after that meet, if the public, if the public comments had been prior to us voting, I really don't know if I could have voted to give somebody something who just called me a racist and a liar and a thief. I, I don't think I could have done that. So I'm glad, I'm glad to vote with before that. What I'm saying is calling names is not gonna get us anywhere. Regardless of who like who, who like what. We have a job to do. Our job is to try to get along. Do we have to like each other? No. But we need to talk to each other with, with a whole lot more humility because as the mayor was trying to get you to calm down, I was saying, or get you to stop, your body language showed that you ready to turn some tables on. That's what I read. And, and at what point? At what point is it about the kids? You can't say this body don't love the kids. We're doing anything for the kids. Matter of fact, we down for the kids. You know, then.
Yeah, and me, I just, uh, interject. I, I've been sitting here, and I'm telling you, um, this is an interesting meeting. Out of my forty-two years in education, I've never been in a meeting like this in my life. Because we've always been able to disagree, agree, get angry, but never to be disrespectful. I've never been disrespectful, respectfully, to any of my colleagues. But I would like for you to take a listen and look who's talking at this table. Just who's talking at this table? All of you sitting here looking at me, but who's speaking up here? Who's talking? I'm glad to see you quiet, but, uh, you can read silence. Who's talking?
We left guard out this meeting.
Amen.
We left guard out. I never get to know the reason that we had. We left first. We opened with.
Okay, look, look. General speaking for help meeting, yes, sir, you're right. But, okay, look, can, can we talk about things we can do going forward? Because, because again, if, if, if we're going backwards, that needs to be discussed by lawyers, quite frankly. Let them deal with it. That, that's not proper for this meeting where, again, I thought we were trying to come together to look at ways where the city council could support the school system, even, even specific ways. And, and I still don't understand why it is objectionable. If we commit X number of funds to X project, that frees up funds you don't necessarily have to spend on that project anyway. So, I mean, there, there appears to be even an objection to us committing funds to something specific. I, which, again, I thought that was the purpose of this meeting, things we could come up with collectively that is beneficial to, to the youth, beneficial to the city at large. I was, quite frankly, hopeful that that's what would be borne out of this meeting. But to do that, we have to look forward, not backwards.
And also, we should have had an agenda. You know, we shouldn't, we should.
It's a workday, it's a workday.
Well, we still need an agenda. We needed to know what we were doing besides just coming here to feel.
Why? Then we have, I, I, I thought y'all were gonna tell us about specific processes.
We should have had an agenda. And I did speak to this, to the, uh, Dr. Hill, and I said to him, get an agenda. Let us know what we're supposed to do. Is it a deal good, or is it like, well, we want to come here to feel good? Or do we want to speak about the issues? And what are the issues? I'm giving you Jack.
Well, no, I mean, well, no, ma'am, I mean, I, I, I thought the issue were how we can work together going forward, again.
Ms. Fraser wants to like to say something.
I just have a few questions.
Sure.
Clarification. Would you all, are you directly asking us as a school board, uh, by way of superintendent to Mr. Foltz, to come up with a prioritized, prioritized list of things that we know as a school board, more of us being retired educators, that our children need to ensure their success, put a price tag on it, and submit it to you? Is, is that what we're getting to?
I mean, that, that would be helpful for, for this body.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I would like to see it that way, but I would like to see it as an annual thing. This is what we're gonna need. Let's, what I'd like to see y'all do is define something annually. Yes, exactly. That's exactly where I'm headed. That is, I would like to see something that, hey, we've got, yeah, because you have a consistent dollar need every year for certain things, right? Whether it's staffing, or supplies, or software, or transportation, or building maintenance, or whatever it is. You have a specific need that you put in your budget every single year. How about you take one of those items that you know you're gonna have every single year, and you get us a, a hard number, and you know, hey, if, if we can get our dream, we need this. And then you can take that money that you've been traditionally budgeting in that avenue and use it for something a little more innovative, for a new music program, or upgrade the playground, or expanding pre-K, or whatever it is that you feel like you need to do as a school board because you know that this cost for software upgrades, or this cost for transportation is being managed outside of your everyday budget that we can annually put in our budget so that we have a known. Now, things like, uh, Ms. Jackson mentioned gas. Well, gas is one of those things that she, one year it's good, one year it's not, right? So we don't really know, or something like that. But we know how much we're gonna pay a bus driver, and we can amortize what kind of cost of living raises they're gonna get over the years, or things like that, so that we can take that burden off of the school system. It's a finite number. It's, in my mind, it's a simple way to kind of free up some of your existing dollars. Let's take one of your hard line, hey, if I look back in the last ten years, this number has been really pretty consistent every year. Now, it may have fluctuated a little bit, but it's been a pretty consistent number. I've got an, an average of, hey, we're gonna spend X number of dollars on this every year. You got those things, everybody's got those things, right? Pull that out of your budget, get it to us, and let us go.
Respectfully.
Go ahead, sure, sure.
Okay, so, and, and I ask this next question as a piggyback to what I just asked. Very, it, it, just, just out of curiosity. When did we stop communicating about what the system wanted every year and what we would like to see the city fund? And, and, as opposed to, obviously, neither one of us. Because there used to be forms that, that were sent from the city manager's office to the superintendent, um, asking specific questions about our priorities. And then a presentation was made to the city council. So have we gotten away from that, I presume?
Yes, ma'am, that became disconnected some time ago, and that really reconnection came in, uh, about the year. Came aboard, this is, because again, I cannot speak from years past because I was not, I was sitting in the business seat.
In your position.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I was in the business.
But we absolutely need that.
I think a lot of that came from, I need to make a decision.
Sure.
But I think a lot of that came from, we've had some transition at superintendent's, and we've had some transition at the city manager's seat. And there's a dis-ship, there's a disconnect. Because there's a disconnect, I, I, I mean, it's a natural thing, right? And, and sometimes it's good, and sometimes it's not so good. Uh, but, but that happens. And that's why I guess I'm going back to this, let's find something in the budget that's always there, that's something that the city can always budget, that we not bound by a change in leadership, that it doesn't, becomes a habitual activity of the council that, hey, we're gonna budget X for the school system in addition to what they're, what they're receiving. We're gonna budget X for the school system. It's gonna cover this cost for it. And five years from now, that cost may change a little bit, but at least we can have, then it's a fairly simple discussion. Hey, costs went up, or costs went down, or, or whatever it is. Or, or we decided that we're gonna contract transportation instead of doing it ourselves. Or we decided we're gonna do it ourselves instead of contracted. I mean, those kinds of things, we can, but at least then we can work to something, and it's not bound by a change in elected leadership, a change in the city manager's seat, a change in the superintendent's seat. It's bound as a kind of universal that works for the betterment of the students and the school system forever. And it, it, it gets to that sustainable path. So now it's not, it doesn't matter if I'm sitting here or you're sitting here, it's done.
Whatever it's worth, I thought that worked well. I thought that process worked well.
And you're totally right, and that's the only reason we're sitting here now, and that's when the super, because the problem I have with city manager. Too many people coming to me speaking on behalf of what they need for the school without, so we're going through the superintendent. That's when the superintendent and I sat, sat together with that transition, when we transitioned out, too many people started transitioning to go to the wrong, they were going to the superintendent. That's why the superintendent had, we had this conversation. And that's why we had the last time when we talked, let us work this out because we understand what our roles are. When everybody's going to someone else and someone else is coming and saying, the school tells me what the school needs, and I call the superintendent, the superintendent has no idea what I'm talking about. These are the things that we sort of got away from, and this is what we're trying to get back to. And that's what we're, we need here because, again, that's what happened because, again, we lost that, we, we lost a, a sense of protocol. We lost that sense. Because you're right, that's what we had at one time. We got to get back there. That's why we need, that's why we can get back there. Because anything that goes through the superintendent, goes through the superintendent, through me, has become, because, again, I understand the superintendent's thing. You all in place, uh, policy. What we do is make sure that placement of policy is carried out. And how can they do that if everybody's going to superintendent, everybody's coming to me, and he doesn't know? And that's what, that's what we're trying to get back to. In order to move forward, we understand we got off, off, off culture. But again, at the same time, we got to get back where we're supposed to, and, and, like you said, appropriate protocol. I think that's what we, I think that's the biggest thing, if you have an agenda, let's get back to appropriate protocol. And that's the big conversation that we have in the day, get back to appropriate protocol so we can not lose sight where we're trying to head in, where we're trying to hit it, to do what's best for these kids. And, and I think that's what, that, that's, 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 that's where I feel about it now. Because I think that's, that's, that's what's happening. I think there's been disrespect for protocol. And I think that's what has happened. And then if we disrespect starts one place, it can change the bill. And that's what we saw today. If we get respect back in our protocol, and it's happened the way it's for that, and the community understands how protocol works, and we hold what, uh, 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 the community, how, uh, accountable to protocol, we wouldn't be here. And so that's what we have, we got to get back there. Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question? I'm, I'm the first person to admit that I'm not a money manager, just ask my. But is there a way that this money that we get every year that we're talking about is sustainable? That we could, as Martin, code somehow? So that we would, so that the city would know where our money is, where that money is going without your department having to sit down and send a report to you every month, or every quarter, or whatever you want, however you want it to work?
Let me say this, already, since we start talking together with our finance departments together, some things like that are happening right now. We code to them, they code to us, so they actually sat down where everything, our whole pots of money, what their, the criterion that's on those pots of money. We are doing what we're supposed to as your, your employees, and that's what we do each other. That is already started. Anything we want from schools, when I come up with my finance director, because I don't, I don't deal with that. I let my finance director talk to her. They come up, give us a number, and they working well on that. That's what we're trying to get. So if they working well on that, we can get together, so we all working well because I trust in what she's doing because I know she gets what we need, and my finance director doing that. I don't have the conversation, damn, I have the conversation. Once the policy in place, I let those people that's in place take care of it. And I think we're doing that now, and that's if we can get back there. I think we, we, we'll be where we need to be.
And if I may, let, let me piggyback off something that Mr. Foltz said. I want to go back to the piece about what happens between the city manager and superintendent. Nobody can promise an organizational group, we're gonna do this, I'll handle that. The response should be, as Mr. Houston did yesterday. He sends me the information, says, you call these people, they have questions, they want to do this. He doesn't set it up and say, I'm gonna take care of it, and I'll make sure that this gets done. He makes sure it comes to me, and, and the response is, because we may not be able to do it, we may not be able to partner with them. We may not be able to, to arrange, make an arrangement. But that's part of what's been happening. Is I go to this person and say, um, we want to do this. Well, we can't get superintendent to do it. Well, that's not that individual's responsibility. Come to the individual that's responsible for it. And I don't want the extra work. It's just simply, can, do we have the means? Not necessarily the resources, but the time and the means. Because just like everybody else has a million projects going on, that's one more thing we've got to watch, monitor, and hope that it comes out right so nobody's upset that it didn't happen. But I don't want to be the first to say, well, hey, I didn't know anything about it, so I can't tell you, you know, that was something somebody else decided to do. Yeah, they called me after they decided to do it. But, but that's, but I do agree that there are some things that we can do before, but I'm gonna say this. Don't get upset with me because we, 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 I don't want us to take it and say what you say. Is what's being asked fair across the board with everybody? Because that's what I mentioned a while ago. That's what I'm saying. Does the museum have to do the same thing that the school system does? That's all I'm asking. I'm not trying to create issue now. But that, I think that's part of where the issue is coming. Because, again, accountability and transparency, I, I started to change my bill of names to that. That's, that's just how deep we are with this. But I want to make sure that when you all sit down as a council or the Board of Education, that everybody can sit back and say, that's what's happening. Because I, I've had conversations with citizens who've come and said, uh, two of them sitting here says, Dr. Hill, you shouldn't go to school. But it wasn't against me, and they made it clear, it's not you, Dr. Hill, you just think this. You know, and, and that's all I'm saying when I say, we, we, we talk about being honest, and I, and I truly believe that this, this entity together wants to do what's right. But everybody's not gonna be happy in the city of Anderson. I have yet to be in any city or county where everybody was satisfied with what any organization did. Because everybody has ulterior motives. I want you to hook me up and take care of mine. Let's be, we're gonna be real about it, let's be real. Okay? And I've experienced some of that on my own. I've even experienced it here. So, and that's why I'm saying, when we talk about how we're gonna do it, how we're gonna move forward. So you answered the question. So if we say sustainability, what does that look like? Moving forward, sustainability means that, because Mr. Foltz and I had that conversation, how long will this last? Well, he can't speak more than what, you know, because now it's gotta be in writing. If it's in writing, will the next council adhere to it? If you all are here, hoping you will be, but if you're not here, will the next council adhere to that? Or will they come back and say, we're gonna reverse that? You know, those are some of the things that you got, you, you got to ask about. I've been, look, the finance officer said, and he was out here, if we put the money towards this, and let's say for instance, two years from now, there's some type of, of, of financial crisis. Will we still receive those funds to maintain that? You as a body have to go back and make some decisions how you could. Because we're, we're still waiting on this session, right? Medium, high, L, B, whatever. So how does that look in, in terms of what will be sustainable? Then the next piece is, this is my worry. Correct me if I'm wrong. I give you a list to say, here's the amount of money, because we can do that now. You know, we'll put it together now. But if I say this costs five hundred thousand, you tell me, Dr. Hill, we can't handle that. Well, yeah, this is why I consider it a priority. You know, you, you get to make that decision. Now, I gotta go still go back to the joint board and try to figure out how to get that done because I was depending on the council to help execute that. That's the piece. So that's the worry too. You know, that's the conversation Mr. Foltz, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we talk about, we have, because we're the ones that are responsible. And then we start talking about how this money is being, and being accounted for, where it goes. The culture in Anderson has always, and, and it's gonna take a long time to clean this up. People don't trust for various reasons. Some people just don't trust because you're my friend, and what you said matters more than me going out myself and investigating, finding out myself. So somebody's gonna say something to somebody, and, and they're gonna automatically, we do that, we're human. So, so part of the issue is changing the culture, the mindset of people. That's the most difficult thing to do anywhere. So if it's difficult in our organization to do, imagine how it is in the community. And, and it can be ten years from now, we could be voted best of everything, best school system, best city council, best this. There's still gonna be somebody looming in the dark that's gonna say, well, you know, there's still a money. There's still gonna be somebody there doing that. But the key that we say which, which stuck on is, are we doing the right things for kids? Because I can explain to you for the most part where our, where our funding goes. You're talking about the eighty thousand dollars. I, I was jumping up for Jordan, she told me that. Then we said, where does it have to go? We even agreed, right, Mr. Foltz kept calling it, it seemed like Dr. Hill gave him a leg. That first day my finance officer came back and said, Dr. Hill, how you gonna pay for this next year? So that's a very good question. I wasn't thinking that part, which I shouldn't have. So, we, we, we gotta go back and look at that. It's a great, I think, you know, but not gonna turn down any of the money. But at the end of the day, I still have to, to, to make sure that that individual can do the things we ask them to do for their children because I think right now that position, that money's gonna be gone before summer. Or by summer. So I, I just, and when we ask for these things, again, if it's fair across the board, it helps us as adults to sit back it helps us as adults to sit back and say, okay, that's feasible, we can do that. But then, if there are some closed-door conversations that need to take place to explain, and I think that's what's missing now. Does it take litigation? I don't know, but I know it takes people being able to say, we talked about it, and this was discussed, and this is how we explain why this didn't happen, or why it should happen, or whatever the case may be. That's not taking place, and that's what needs to happen, because we still gotta hear each other out. I don't care how you slice it and dice it, you tear my roof off of my house, and I'm mad at you, I'm not gonna sit here and fuss with you, because now I gotta go out and put a tarp over there, and hope that it doesn't rain, right? You still gotta go back and have a conversation of how I get this done before you have to go to that next step. You have not done that.
I totally agree with everything that you're saying. What was mentioned was a police and fire pension fund. I think it would be very helpful if everyone could be educated on the dire situation that it was in. It wasn't like the city was trying to be unfair to the schools, but I really think we need some education here, and with the museum, I mean, what is their procedure? I really think that you are right on target, Dr. Hill, that we all need to have an understanding that we really don't, most people really don't have it. It's a lot of rumors and innuendos that's been going on, and so you're absolutely right.
Let me say this, because you hit a hard point, I wish I hadn't mentioned the museum, because the museum has accountability, they have to follow up on the direction of. So let me get that straight.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm gonna say, people not knowing though, she said that people not know.
But that's the point, because there's so many things that spilled out there, which was not actually correct, and you are correct. And here's another thing that I want, as we talk about, the public has to understand. I understand, and I'm not gonna try to debate with it by my passion to have a kid, because my record speaks for itself, but what I'm gonna say is this, is that sometimes people don't understand, what we have to give, what I have to give when I'm dealing with a budget, what about affordable housing? You know, the city, you're responsible for that as well. What about the homelessness situation? City, you're responsible for that as well. Education, education is very important, but when I'm dealing with this budget, we can't just, I gotta look at it from a holistic approach, okay? Education, you have to look at it from your approach. So when you're saying what we may need, let's understand this with your budget. If I'm asking for five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollars for a project, let's be realistic. In order for me to actually make sure everybody in the city gets what they're supposed to get as well as I can, the best part of life they can have, maybe that may not be realistic. So the conversation has to be had, say, this is what, the same thing I do with my budget. My political director can say, I need a new tractor, sometime I say, hey, man, I'm not worried about the tractor, just a person that can, you, I'm not worried about the truck, just get the tractor where it need to be going, if you understand what I'm saying, so you can't get a new truck. So what I'm saying, as long as we're realistic, we can make this work, but it's us and you and I got to know what we need, and we got to be realistic about this, and that's why we're the way we are, because someone says, if you're not capable of doing what you're supposed to do, you should change your zip code, and I believe in that, but I think if we allow us to do what we're supposed to, because your budget has to be presented to your Board of Education, our budget has to be presented to the council. You chose what we need, and we said what's realistic, then it's up to the council and the board to make that decision. But we can't, we cannot be unrealistic, there cannot be a ceiling, there has to be a ceiling, and it has to be a realistic ceiling, so sometime I just, you just have to make a decision, what's best for the program, not what I need. And I tell my people each and every day, it's wants, it's not what you want, it's what you need in order for, because we work for the citizens. I know I report to the council, but I know I work for the citizens of Anderson, and that's what I look out for. That's what, I think we can make this work, because we understand where we're trying to go, because my passion is the same way, but let's stop allowing people to see that we're not what we need to be, and let's get where we need to be, so people can stop believing. They're not gonna believe in us if we don't believe in ourselves. If we want them to believe in us, it's the same thing, if I can't, you know, that old saying says, if you can't, it's down on bridges, down on the road, you understand what I'm saying here? Sometimes we have to do that, and that's what I do each and every day, because I know what's important to me, because somebody invested in my life, I'm here because somebody invested in me. That's what we got to do, and we got to understand where we come from, so we can do the best we can. And so that's my willingness to work with superintendent, because again, I don't talk, nobody talks to the superintendent if you need something, because again, it's not from my decision to talk to board member, I didn't talk to him, I didn't talk to board, the same thing, with the council, I won't talk to the council. I think if we move forward from this, and this is our, and we gotta focus, we gotta focus on which is our kids, I think we can make this work, and that's just.
Well, you mentioned, I'm gonna piggyback on you there, and I think you are really being truthful and transparent, and I'm gonna tell you why. You stayed a few minutes ago, and I remember about the firing and the police retirement fund. It was a crisis. If those people didn't have a retirement, you probably would have people leaving, getting it anyway, seeing who you all trained with, but even most of them, if they didn't have a retirement, you're telling the truth. It was a crisis. I haven't just lived in Anderson. We used to have loose slowdowns, I mean, if the police officers didn't get it, put it on when they wanted it. They had break, in New York State, every reunions. So if they didn't get a retirement, you probably would not have had a police department. So what you're saying, and I think you're being very transparent, I think we use these terms, but we use them loosely, but I think that was one of the reasons. And if we go back, and I hope you, and I really wish the mayor would stop talking about losses.
That's good for y'all, nothing, but for Ms. Mumford.
I know what you're saying, but.
Y'all have thrown litigation, we're not suing y'all.
Y'all ain't throwing nothing, but let me just say this, we have worked so hard, I'm gonna tell you why that. I'm on Freedom Rights, and I really wanna piggyback, you didn't break down, you told the truth, and I did. But I'm on the Freedom Rights Board. We have worked hard for the last, I've been here thirteen years, I've been on that board. When we first came here, the people didn't even believe, even on the board, and exactly the Anderson City Council, that this thing would ever go anywhere, thirteen years ago. We worked hard, we prayed, we did all kinds of things. The Anderson Star was very helpful to us. All of a sudden, when Obama went and signed this parks and recreation thing for us, it got announced from that point. But the county was always there with us from day one. They always supported our efforts for Freedom Rights, they always believed that we could get this done. But the city of Anderson did not have any, they didn't think it would happen.
The 2012 council actually purchased property to effectuate that, because that's the reality.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, but I know the county was very comfortable.
That was way before President Obama made the designation.
Well, I'm just thinking about the, uh, the two and nine times. When I walked in, this is what we faced, and so that was done, thanks to Dr. Gordon, and thanks to Peter and all the others, it happened, and then they moved right in, and began to work with us when they saw that it could happen. So I guess what I'm saying, we don't need to be talking about losses, we need to be talking about how we can work together, and other things that are happening in the city of Anderson. Anderson is so on, the Anderson School Board here is on the rebound, we are on our way, and we need your support, and we need your help, and we need some help. But I really don't think we need to be talking about any losses.
But Ms. Mumford, y'all are the ones who are doing that, that's not us, I mean, that's.
I'm, because me and you talking about, I heard it about.
I talked about it in response to your chair.
I don't wanna start another argument on this.
Well, I think about.
But let me just say, you, this is what I heard from you.
Well, yeah, I definitely wanna, you know, apologize to the community for my spout of too much passion. You know, I can agree to say, everybody will hopefully, like it was stated earlier, everyone at this table has some form of passion, and cares for our students. Again, if you don't, shouldn't be here, but it should never get to the point where we are, again, not respecting one another as leaders, because again, we were all elected or appointed to do a specific job. So I do have to apologize to the community for not holding myself to that standard as a leader. I do want to leave, and I'm not gonna speak after this, because I don't know if we've gotten anywhere, or if we plan on getting anywhere, but I do want to say this, I, as a city councilwoman, and I can, I'll say this on behalf of the city council as well, we want to do what we can to help. There's no, there's not been a time where we've said no to giving funds, there's not been a time of us saying, you know, there's, there's no negative, there's nothing that we don't want to do for you guys, that's all I'm saying. So I feel like at some point, when we can get together and say, hey, this is what we want to accomplish, how can you fund it? Even in the protocol that you guys used to do before, you know, we were on council, you know, while you guys were on board, I think that's an excellent idea, it was something that you said that worked, and maybe you guys were on the city council at the time when that was working. Maybe we can go back to that, and then at the end of the day, you know, we've got to figure out, what are some takeaways from this, what can we do to be able to help our students? And I don't know if we've gotten there, to be honest, it doesn't feel like we've gotten to that point, I don't know if it's gonna require more meetings, maybe individual meetings, so we can get past some feelings or something like that for us to move forward, but at the end of the day, we want to do what's best, at least I want to do what's best, so that we can move forward, and hopefully that's helpful in some type of way.
Anything else? Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on that, my passion is very strong, very strong. Again, many years ago, we do a lot of things in this world, except for retirement, but I chose to stay in Anderson, in the big damn school system. So when I talk, and I see things in the, that are blocking from succeeding, and, Councilman Smith, I apologize to you personally for my behavior as a professional, and as a manager. I should have done it, I should have stayed calm and responded versus what happened. But when I see my conversation, my perception was, I saw disrespect, so I responded to it, that did it. So again, not only you, but everybody that heard this or looking at this, that's not who I am, that's not what I'm about, but I am passionate about the children, and our, we have gotten our finances together, contrary to possible belief, and now we're gonna work on academics, because we have to stop this pipeline from schools to prison, we have to stop this. If we can sit down as a council, the board, and talk about needs, and have something in writing where we say, these are the needs we have, and the council said, either we can do it or we can't, we'll know how to move forward. I've talked to other people about foundations, there are people who are willing to work with us on foundations. But again, we had to get our finances together, before anybody would talk to us, and we are there. Now, are there some snap moves every now and then, where we're supposed to post something and it doesn't show up?
Yeah.
It happens, but is it intentionally? No, never, nothing happened. So I'll say is, it may feel like nothing happened, but a lot happened, okay? And again, I think Councilman Smith is right, there need to be some one-on-one sessions with different people in this room, including myself, because we don't even know each other, and we make assumptions about each other, we all have a story to tell, we all have a story. So we need to tell our stories, you know, let me just, you know, if you're in this room, you got a story, okay?
A comment is meant to be addressed to people. Well, exactly, we gotta keep this with members here, because we have public comments for both bodies.
Can I make this recommendation? I understand, maybe somewhere, get individually, but could I work with superintendent to try to put something together, some format like you're saying, an agenda type, that we talk about this, what the school system may need, and we keep into what we already know. And after the holidays in January, we have our next quarterly meeting, and or two, and let's move forward from that, that having an agenda in place, have things in place so we can have this conversation, because keep in mind, the budget type process can be up on us before we even know it. So if we can do that in January, come out in January, we meet this body that you, that you are actually take a look at as a unit, as a body, and then we can go from there, have something to work on. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Well said, let's leave it on that then, and let's stay at a retirement.
Okay, thank you.